Let me go ahead and call this Navajo Committee of the 24th Council Public Hearing to session in order here at the Dene College at the South Campus, Lurker Hall in Shiprock, New Mexico, on the Navajo Nation. Today's date is Thursday, March 5, 2020. The time now is 9:25 a.m. We have a proposed agenda that was handed out while everybody was coming in. Presiding is by myself Seth Damon, Speaker of the 24th Navajo Nation Council. You have a roll call here and those individuals for the record. I have Honorable Amber Carty, I have Honorable Wilson Stewart, I have Chairwoman Charles Newman here present with us. But I do have four members from the 24th Navajo Nation Council that are in attendance here today. Without further ado, I really like to move on with the invocation and Honorable Chairman Charles Newton, you might give the invocation for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good morning. Shik'ek'e'na'os'neki'ano'ek'eha. Thank you for being here today to discuss this important topic. It is issue that has been played here for people for some time now. We are here, we are ready to listen and as Speaker stated, we want to talk about this issue, especially the evacuation pond happening here in Shiprock that has to be addressed. We are coming up to the lifespan of that material that's currently holding in pond right now. So I'm hoping that we can hear some of that, maybe some ideas today. So with that, I'm going to say a prayer this morning on behalf of myself, my colleagues, and also my community here and the members who are here with us today here.
Thank you again Madam Chair Charles Newton for the wonderful invocation. Again, as I spoke earlier to the community members, if you are requesting to speak today, there is a form that's up at the top of the... As you're coming in, we would really respectfully, if you could, will fill out that form so we can go ahead and have as a dialogue for not only my colleagues who are not here, but as a record in order for us to go ahead and move forward as this will eventually become into a form of a resolution, a legislation of the 24th Navajo Nation Council and eventually the President will go ahead and move forward on a position statement for the nation. Let me go ahead and go down and have recognizing guests and visiting officials, but in that timely manner, let me start from my left to my right. How my colleagues in the 24th Council introduce themselves, which is your right to your left. So go ahead, Madam Chair.
Oh, yad'e. Sh'ek'e'ne'as'ke'ani'ne'shle'to bilagana'va sh'sch'in, desch'in'i'vesh'ch'edot bilagana'deshe'male. She Amber K'inas'va Carty, yine'sha'tohotzwa'edan'ach'a. So I come from Sheep Springs. I represent the communities of Sheep Springs, Two Great Hills, Toddlinna, Sonosti, Red Valley, Cove, Gadiay, and McClavato. But really as a delegate, we represent all of our people in all regions. And so I appreciate Speaker, your staff, and my colleagues here to hear directly from the public because what we want is a position statement that encompass the heart of the people and we know that we just missed that mark on the last position statement. So thank you for all being here and providing the guidance. Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, Chairman Charles Newton.
Good morning. Na'am' shik'e'na'os'neki'. Again, thank you all for being here. I'm really happy that Speaker could come here and that my colleagues could join me here today. I do apologize on behalf of my other colleagues who are not here. Many of us are in different places at different times. So some of my colleagues are addressing some issues in Arizona with the State Task Force. There are some who are at an energy summit who couldn't be here today and then some who are attending to local matters at their chapters. So again, you know, I do apologize, but I'm grateful that we do have two of my colleagues who are here to listen to the people. As my sister Amber stated, you know, this position statement will be submitted to the federal government and it's going to be a position statement that will be on behalf of the Shiprock community in regards to the evacuation pond. So to give you a little bit of background, we had this position statement presented to us during the winter session, but many of my colleagues felt like the community was not consulted in regards to this position statement. So we tabled that legislation and we asked for a work session, which my fellow speaker Damon has, you know, he put together just this public hearing. We are going to have three other, five other public hearings around the nation, listening to the different communities. This is the first public hearing, so again, we look forward to hearing what you have to say about the evacuation pond, maybe some ideas that you have that you can present to the federal government. So with that, I do want to say thank you again for coming. va'ay'ei sh'ah'op'ah'chote. So it's, people say to quote, and then some people say na'f'ani'ne's. And so I have to say both so that people know where I come from, where I was raised. So with that, I would go ahead and turn it over to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Good morning, Speaker. Ado'ok'ay' sh'ek'e'na'os'neki'ano'ek'eha.
Ok'oh.
Yad'e, h'idi'ni'le'ch'ey'ya' Wilson's sister, yine'sha'edot'cel't'od'edan'ach'a.
What can I say, guests and visiting officials? Madam Chair.
Thank you, Speaker. So I do want to recognize, we have James Winawley here with the chapter president for Cove. To recognize him, we have Perry Charlie, who's the Northern Agency representative with the Dene Uranium Commission. We have Mr. Perry still here with Red Mesa Unified School District from Peace. We have Mr. Ya'zi from Navajo AML. Sh'Yaj here, Chul'ay'azi with Shiprock Chapter President. We have Mr. Darrell Williams. Williams, I apologize, Ya'az. This is Delegate Charlene So's Legislative District Assistant. And then my Ya'az here, I just call him Dr. Dr.
Ray.
Ray. Dr. Ray, who breaks it down and tells us what to do best. We have San Juan County Commissioner Shamot Gol'jin Totichini, Vice President Hazel Sherman with McClavato Chapter. My Ya'az back there, Gilbert, Gilbert, what's your last name?
Gee.
Gee, Gilbert Gee. I met him when he was at the Dene College and now a grassroots or community organizer. Again, Tommy Reed from the Navajo Uranium Workers. And then I see right here Shamot Eva Stokely with the Shiprock Community. And then I want to recognize Noel Smith from Farmington Daily Times. And then my other Ya'az right here, Mr. So, who's Vice President of Peace House Plus Chapter and his wife. And Mr. Darrell Ya'zi from Navajo Environmental Protection Agency. And then Sh'Beja here from Department of Energy.
Chrissy Margaux.
Chrissy Margaux. And then we have Joseph Hernandez with Gadiay, Klepsy, but also part of Nava. And then all rise to Delegate George Arthur and also Phil Harrison, who is part of the Navajo Uranium Workers. And I can't see past... Oh, Mr. Arthur is Mr. Paul with McClavato School Board Association. So and then of course Cal Curly with Senator Tom Udall's office. And then going back here, Jim with Senator Heinrich's office. And is that Mr. Austin with Navajo EPA Water? I deserve an award. I got most of you and I appreciate all of you here. One more. Oh, well, all rise for real. President Russell B'Gaye has joined us, so it's really good to see you here.
She covered everybody. For everybody else who's here, oh, we also have our Shiprock Chapter President, Duane Chul'ay'azi, who's also here with us as well. And I think Amber doesn't deserve an award because I think she's covered everybody in here. But for those of you who she didn't cover, welcome again to my community, Shiprock, the best city in the nation.
Oh, wow. Suburbs? Again, good morning, everyone. We can go ahead and proceed with the agenda. I just wanted to say I thank you again for the community of Shiprock for showing up today and to the suburb chapters that are here. Thank you very much. I love coming up here in Northern Agency along the river. My name is Seth Damon and I'm the Speaker of the 24th Navajo Nation Council. I'm a Dene born from Nevada, says, "If that shouldn't go," ashy'ne'edesh'ch'edot'as'ep'ne'edesh'ne'ala. I come from a place south of Navajo, Mexico, Almahaleh, Brick Springs. So again, thank you for inviting us up here and thank you Madam Chair for recognizing that we did need to have, and also Madam Chair Carty too as well, that we did need, and also the other delegation. Madam Chair, Vice Chair Charlene So and also Chairman Nez, recognizing that we needed to hear from the public here in Northern Agency. Today, we are going to cover what we wanted to do as an outreach, listening to the community members, the local leaders, and the individuals that are part of the grassroots coalition of fighting on an everyday basis of what we've been fighting for, I guess what's been occupying the Navajo Nation for the past six decades, and that's uranium issues that have been hindering some of our people, hindering probably everybody, every single family member here on the Navajo Nation has some part of some uranium discussion in their homes, whether that's working with EPA, whether that's working with AML, whether that's working with RICA or Downwinders Association, whether that's working with IHS or United States Nuclear Programs, whether that's working with individual chapters, whether that's working with individuals from our past leadership. What we're here today is listen to individuals and listen to your concerns because at the end of the day, as Madam Chair Charles Newton had indicated, is that what we're here is we're trying to gather as much information that we might not have or possibly may even have left out of the discussion. And we're trying to put every possible piece of recognition into a position statement for the Navajo Nation that we will eventually hand over to the federal government. This is the first time that in my tenure as being a delegate for the past five years that we have looked to making a position statement for the entire nation. And I really want to thank our colleague, Honorable K'elon B'Gaye, who has started this discussion and he's the one that brought forth the legislation, working together with Navajo EPA and the federal partners from San Francisco, our federal agents, federal program from EPA. And what we did as Madam Chair Amber Carty indicated, it was a working form document and we were looking to add that, add more information. So that's why we're here today. We're here to listen to you, listen to your concerns, but most importantly, you have the discussion, the dialogue too as well if there are any in retrospect. What we'll do is we'll proceed, recognizing, providing if anybody has any written statements, please forward that over to us at this time. If there's anybody that's going to be writing a verbal request to speak, again, requests that you fill out one of these forms, they're at the top of the table when you first come in. You'll have three minutes to speak and it seems like I don't have that in many individuals in there. We probably can go ahead and extend that right now a little bit. We'll be starting here right after we go ahead and move forward. We'll go ahead and have a public statement from, again, from everybody who's requested to speak. After that, if there's any comments or questions, serve back to my colleagues, we'll go ahead and have the floor open for dialogue. Then we can go ahead and do those recommendations, final thoughts, and then, or close the session. So without further ado, is there anything that my colleagues want to add on to that? Anything? If you're done, yes. Well, as of right now, I only have eight individuals that are wanting to speak. That's it. So that is, if there's only eight, I'm changing this to five minutes. So with that, without further ado, Mr. Stokely? Eva?
I'd like to thank the committee for coming to Shiprock. It's not very often that we have this privilege. And I know many of us have questions that we'd like to get answered, but it's hard to get it sometimes. Eva? Eva Stokely, I reside here in Shiprock. I've been in Shiprock for many, many years as an educator. And this morning, I'm going to speak on the Downwind. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband Peter. He's not too loud and wasn't able to come. And also, for his mother, oh, excuse me. Anyway, Peter comes from the Pinyon area, Fort Corrigan. And his mother has lived for many, many years. She always heard, she, she, she woke and that was her occupation. And then her son, Peter, left there to go to school, went to the Army, and then returned with me to Shiprock to teach. And meanwhile, his mother remained in the Fort Corrigan area, which is near Pinyon. And then many, many years went by and this Downwind came by. At the time, the people who lived there didn't know that's what was happening, that the Downwind beginning to affect them. So she passed on and so Peter and I decided that we would do what we could do on her behalf because I think the people in that area are really neglected, on the Fort Corrigan area, Pinyon. Those people still have the traditional way and they're not going to go out like this to a public meeting. So we need to get in contact, those people, get right down to where they live. Anyway, Peter and I, Peter and I have been going to several places to file for the Downwind for him and his mother. So far, we haven't heard anything. In fact, I got a whole letter, a court that we had given or we were interviewed. And all the information on that report is wrong. It says the name, his mother's name was Margaret. It says, "What's your name, Margaret?" And they have Peter Stokely in there. So they mixed up his mother and his records on this report. And then another person came by and told me to call Washington. So I got numbers and I couldn't get through at all to that report. And so that's what we have, some of us are having problems with that. So first, that's the main thing, is to get in touch with these folks who really need help and how can we, how can Minister Stokely file so that he can get compensation for him and his mother? Their mother should die late back before this came through. So I do thank you again for coming and I hope that other folks can get help. I know a lot of them, that have tried and nothing so far. Thank you.
reservation. All the rich resource that we have within our mother's breast, ado' how this uranium has impacted our way of life, our traditional way of life? What this uranium has done, impacted air, water, ado' ni'ke'ya'? Ado shishit di ayeh. Eh hon yeh, n'chayet dam shijod. N'de ha'jin neh. Za n'jono t'eyah be deitih, be deitih. Air quality. Choton chetol, ado ben noh shono, to b'achshano, adje. Ha'jin ney be chayet dam. Ya, eshniyiv hon sahna. Cell, uranium. K'atas, kitoyan, kitoyabi. It has outlived its expectancy. N'chayim kehav, t'av. Eh esepana ishkeiye. How, I know you're the spearhead. You are the spear that protects the Navajo Nation. Every decision making, ch'ibahna, esoh t'aham. What has, what we've seen in our area without our consent, without our approval. A cell was built. And n'chamanneh, she never worked a day of her life. We lost a life in Himatha, adje. There's impact areas on the reservation. We lost a deer mother and we lost our father from hard rock mining uranium. My question to you, because risk assessment. How much study? How is it formulated? Because we have 29 mines in our land permitted area, grazing permitted area. The impact that this uranium has done to my family displaced us. They call it a hot zone. You cannot live near mines because how much radon it is emitting from those mines. Ha'shit ayeh ihi, nevah risk assessment. N'chimakamneh, you're the spearhead that ha'ji t'ab ben aso chen. You build that intimate domain. Are you going to build more cells under this intimate domain? That's my question to you because there's one that was built without our consent. Is this, is this Navajo government? Oh, best now, we get to high so calm, just like sacrificing to your own children. You're almost, you're almost right there. Hitah, na isteh, oh, I'm n'chayet ho'et. We want somebody, the Navajo Nation Government, to address our concern as to why you built that cell on our land without our consent. My question would that, would that be to Mr. Harrison Carr, the lawyer, DOJ? Ado cheha, ah, ah, achtho. Eh ich ayeh di ch'ba'ani, eh. T'neh ap'oh, ap'oh et niho, eh, yacheh. The art value of life, t'neh beyina. Ah, n'chayet. Eh cheha, thank you, Beth.
Yat e, yat e, shikay doh shedeneh. Ado, eh cheha doh, ch'arek di, oh, n'chadah, ah, eh. Adi, ha'na, chayi, na, na, bekei, yachet kamidi. Ado, n'jona shoh, di, oh. Um, ch'otshon, eh, you, you, you are voices even as shon ha'ayeh neh. Akoh, di, oh, di, oh, bekechol la. Unan ta, t'tahteh, bech'ana, oh, ito. Beke, ha'jro, karahi, shetki hot eli, na shedi shenah, lo, n'chahatzeh, eh, shetso. Es'chahatzoh, neh. Ado, be'tha'neh, ba'shichin. Ado, sheh, nan, inan, lo, ch'ozel chaneh, nan, it's sheh. Akoh, di ayeh, eh, eh, hat eshniyiv, beke, cha'od, t'ha'neh. Adet, adet mit ash. Bekejedoh, akoh, g'na'aj, eh, or de'ah, di, eshniyiv, yet. Globalary fibrosis, that's, that's on their death certificate. Akoh, adeya, konkei, eh. Eh, jonda, oh, Navajo Nation, eh, they declared a hot zone. N'tlahach, ch'adah, eh, donh, neh, ado, konda, achthadet, oh, ado, konke, dah, t'neh. Ah, um, um, shijedeh, um, 890 acres of grazing permitted. Ch'adah, ch'adah, sheh sin, eh, ch'adeh, ch'adeh, achtho. Uh, it's been declared a hot zone. Akoh, shenah, ado, shadach, ah, kon, na, ah, zel, neh, t'neh. Helt abaghan, eh, 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 be, that's where they're holding up right now. Akoh, ah, kon, la, Washington address, when I did kid, uh, you guys need to come see me. Washington, oh, and yet say, yeah, two times to the National EPA eh, who shi. Di, oh, shednan, ah, beke, la, ha'desh, shenach, eh, son, pan, eh, zna, na, chay. Akoh, na, ts'ozeh, ro, eh, ha'desh, cha, ah, di, kon, shenah, ya, ah, neh, ah, di, mit, ah, kechazah. Do, oh, do, neh, eh, di, hoti. Akoh, eh, ashii, da, ze, eh, neh, shijideh, do, do, ch'edna, na, wein, zeneh, ah, ch'eh, ch'adah, eh, di. Hat eshniyiv, eh, de'shatna, ha'dneh. Akoh, shet, 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 k'ez, oh, sh'ah, ah, sini, oh, eh. Adi, cha, do, be'ani, ch'ashineh, ah, da, zel, oh, ah, don, ke, ke, eh, ni, oh, da, zel, da, zel, be'ani, ch'eshineh. Eh, neh, ah, cha, da, ah, zoh, be'ani, shenah, son, yachet, ha'ani, eh, shenan, ah, noh, cheni. Oh, ay, na, ts'ozeh, k'eshla. Do, ay, di, bech'ana, oh, ti. Do, ah, ni, eh, 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 beke, karahi, eh, di. Do, t'ahav, ah, zeh, b'ah, ona, ah, zeh, ah, oh, eh. Akoh, do, eh, do, eh, do, eh, di, oh, chay, gahda. Be'ani, ah, ch'ot, ch'ot, ha'dei, nan, ke, eh, ah. Ha'dei, la, be'ani, ch'ideh, na, oh, ti, kon, eh, nen, da. Eh, eh, ah, senah, de'shnu, ch'arek, ha'na, chayi, eh, cheha. Eshii, da, da, n'chayet. Di, di, my, here, as this time. Ado, ah, ts'ezkes, z'ukesh, neh. Ah, ch'um, se, eh, cheha. Yat e. Shen, kon, ni, eh, shedegi. Ado, ko, ba'ih, sh'ton, ashii, ba'shichin, ka'neh, da, eh. Da'shichin. Ado, kechichin, eh, da'shenar, ado. Eh, ah, n'chayet, n'chayet, na, ke, da'shichin. Kechichin, eh, na, ke, da'shenar. Ado, ka'piri, nes, ch'adoh, eh, ha'neh, n'ar, z'adoh, ta'at. Akoh, di, ba'des, eh, n'chayet, ya, ch'adon, da, do, ke, speri, le, eski. J'udh, eh, ayeh, tan, ka'piri, nes, ch'ashon, eh, ayeh, tan. Public hearing, da'azni, chapter half, na, da, ah, public hearing, da'azni. Ah, na, da, neh, do, ah, na, ta, ah, di, ah, di, ah, na, da, eh, da, eh, na, da. President, beke, eh, ya, do, eh, ya, Uranium Advisory Commission. Aba'iyeh, ya. Eh, na, da, eh, da, sheshe, 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 ha'shit, ah, eh. Harry Charles, yo, eh, ah, eh, ah, eh, ah, eh, ah. N'chadah, iskei, doh, the public hearing, da'azni. Akoh, ch'adon, ts'ezkes. Di, da, bech'ana, ka'piri, nes, ch'ashon, eh, eh, public hearing, da'azni. Akoh, ka'piri, ch'adon, na, na, bekei, eh, kitoh, ba'be, public hearing, na, da, eh. Eh, eh, chayi, ba'des, eh, so, ayeh, tan, eh, public hearing, da'azni, ayeh, tan, eh, ah. Ch'adon, oh, ch'adon, eh. N'teh. Ch'adon, US EPA, Region Nine, Superfund Program. Ch'ueh, esh'ashen, ayeh, tan, ah, eh. Na, da, ch'adon, ah, eh, be'isin, deyris. Ch'adon, ts'atach, uh, de'k'isdeh, oh, n'druyazeh. Navaho EPA Superfund Program, ch'ueh, ayeh, ya, na, ah. Eh, ayeh, esh'indad, neh, ko, ko, regulators, eh, n'chayi. Akoh, n'chayet, da, eh, ka'piri, nes, ch'adoh, eh, ayeh, tan, ch'adah. Ts'ita, eh, esh. Ayeh, tan, eh, ya, Reliable Site Evaluation, eh, n'chayi, ayeh, tan, ya. The EPA, ayeh, tan, eh, eh, da. Eh, ya, Engineering Evaluation Cost Analysis, ya, na, eh. Eh, achtho, eh, ayeh, tan, unan, eh, eh, ya. Beke, na, na, public comment, na, ah, neh, da. In consultation with tribal government, ah, nah. Eh, chayi, eh, 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 ba'des, eh, so, ch'adon, da, eh, Perry. Navaho Uranium Commission, eh, n'chayi. Eh, di, ah, eh, achah, public hearing, da, eh, so. Eh, di, ah, eh, da, oh, n'sh'od, eh, be, 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 da, da, noh. Es'chadah, ah. Their, by, their recommendation is going to go to the office of the President and Vice President to implement any cleanup activities. Now, you guys are going down the same road. That's where I guess, um, I have a concern. The tronic government is, for us, the, ah, the, the, the tronic government is to be used to directly do stinging and cleanup activities. Eh, eh, chayi, eh, ch'adon, ayeh, eshki, doh, eh, eh. But the public comment, eh, n'noh, noh, consultation, eh, n'chayi. So, di, ch'adon, eh, EPA, ch'adah, esh'ar, esh. These, engineering evaluation and cost analysis, eh, n'chayi. Ch'adon, ya, doh, eh, ah, the public comment, na, ah. They're within a year and a half, the two years to have that done. And then from there on, they will have invitations of the federal military or the federal department to do that. Eh, eh, chayi. Ado, ch'adon, inso, eh, ya. Ch'adon, ts'atsatach, eh, oh, ah, don, eh, da, noh. Ya, ben ya, ado, eh, na, n'shigi, rose green, Navaho AML. Di, ch'adon, kin, eh, da'shatna, eh, ayeh, tan, patan, da'shii, esh. Akoh, inso, eh, ya. Instead of trying to create something new, why can't we let US EPA take the lead agency? And if we want to build a Navajo Nation capacity and capability to address these abandoned uranium sites, we have the expertise and the capability with Navajo AML already. Here, we can build their capacity and capabilities. Have them work with the, even though they're already doing it. Have them build that capacity by having employees, employees work with US EPA to where they can be able to undertake all these activities at a later date. And that's what I've always been advocating for. Advocating everybody to work together. Because my people have been living with this uranium impact after effects for 70, 70 years. And what they're saying is, when do we get to see any construction activities? When? So right now, we're on the verge of getting there. Maybe two more years. That is what I'm looking at for, for my constituents. And that's my recommendation to you guys, to Navakiya, ki, ah, na, da, in article, probably, her, or, uh, council delegate. That is what I've always been advocating. She, and she knows my, my stance. And I understand, she does say things like that at times for our behalf. And I appreciate that. And I wish she would continue. So that's what my recommendation to you guys are. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, distinguished members of Navajo Mission Council, Mr. Speaker, and the audience, eh, cheha, eh, shen, adon. I apologize for walking behind you. For, uh, my, na, long, image, eh, is what. Just realize I think I don't, don't stop this. Ado, oh, eh, uh, uh, I was named and, uh, she, ah, n'sanor, you. I come from three fronts. As a voting member of the Club to a Chapter. I, eh, be seen, ah, shap, born and raised out there. Joseka, chi, n'shniro, shi, da'shje. Ah, ni, da'shach, eh, doh. Um, na, k'edun, eh, eh, da'shanaleh. I also come as a senior environmental scientist and Executive Director of the N'De Environmental Institute Research and Operations with the N'De College. And thirdly, uh, I just got received in, in text messages from my Executive Director of the N'De Uranium Remediation Commission. Ch'adon, eh, di, ch'adon, sen, da, oh, cheha. I wish, like Selis said, I could spend the next four, five years talking about the effects of uranium. That's how long I've been researching and doing cleanup on, on Navajo lands and off the reservation for that matter. But let me make some very strong points as to the cleanup position, uh, as I see it. I also had a five-page summary that I will introduce to the Council here on my position as a scientist on the Shiprock DOE cells and the proposed alternatives, one, two, and three. Eh, eh, for the record, I will do that. And as part of this, as a commission also, I will also forward, and I'm sure you have, uh, position statements from other resources like the N'De Center for Research and Evaluation, uh, the Shiprock Chapter, uh, Navajo AML and others, eh. Those are available, um, uh, to, to use, or they, eh, I will submit those. Number one, my analysis and my looking at the position statement. How long are we going to continue to study the Navajo people? It's been 70 years. I myself am guilty of doing that for 46 years as a scientist. We have too many studies. We have too many risk assessments. At any given time within the Navajo Nation, there are over 600 studies on human health. How many of these are on uranium? Dr. Raymond Reek can better explain that and quantify that. Akoh, the people, our people who are affected, the N'De, uh, the N'De people are requesting action. S'chayi, oh, esh'ey, da, noh, eh, noh, da, noh, ch'eh, ch'eh, da, neh. Ya, da, cha, kon, se, t'zeli, oh. Oh, we have tons of radioactive waste. But hey, we have yet to quantify this. Do, bad, and how much waste is out there? We know how much is in the DOE sites right here, but less than a half mile from here. Uh, one in Mexican Head, in Tubac City. Uh, much remains on Navajo lands. And it's affecting our people through the air, through land, through our soil, uh, through erosions, akoh, oh, hayu, akoh, and even through wind. And we will continue to be subject to that. So we need to look at how much, uh, all of these studies, eh, there is no housing, there is no repository. Oh, ah, han, di, ja. Each agency, each university, each, anybody who comes on, they retain these studies and we are not using them to do an analysis overall so that we could get to the brunt of the problem. And that is cleanup. Designing the cleanup criteria. What are we going to do with the, uh, with the waste out there? Ado, I see in the, uh, in the position statement, the application of the fundamental law of the N'De, the N'De. Eh, chay, banan, go, sh'ha, cha, achshenet, ah, noh, ch'negi, la. These laws are retained for our medicine circle. N'chahas, twi, dan, n'chayi, I hear today, they are meeting in Wideraw. Ah, achtho, much knowledge is retained in the ayobas, eshki, chay. Ayon, esh'andah, esh, n'ge, andah, eshki. I also sit on the Genetics Policy Council as a Navajo geneticist. Akoh, eh, bo, esh'bat, oh, na, ah, zeh. Some of the, the, the minute structures in the chromosomes, li, na, ah, zeh, oh. Akoh, eh, 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 bahas, ki, eh, eh, ah, neh, doh, da, da, ki, eh, eh, na, da, da, esh'twi. So there's a lot of knowledge that is retained, baso, eshki. Consult with your practitioners, your cultural advisors, n'ch'adah, ah, noh, eh. Akoh, ado, odont, ado, n'edet, oh, do, boh, neh, oh, eh, ch'abaneh, chay, bo, ya, eh. So that has to be addressed in the position statement. Risk assessment. There's a heavy reliance on the superfund surplus. I don't, eh, I don't mind, I'm using most of my life. But what about the application of true knowledge? N'chay, kehoni, n'chayi, are tied to the environment. Ah, zeh, ha'shin, sh'tseko. I'm not talking about the fundamental law. I'm talking about something that is unique to us. N'la, n'cheshnahaz, ah, de, n'chayeh, yah. B'eshnahaz, ah, eh, b'eshin, de, eh, eh, n'chay, n'chay, ch'i, yah. The plants, ado, the animals, n'chay, toh, n'chay, n'chay, uh, n'ch'eh, n'chay, land. Eh, ah, zeh, we know what, what is dear to us. Ch'je, I'm doing the last two months, I mean, two, two days here on the site here. I was doing ceremonial and herbal plant survey leading into risk assessment. Basos, eshki. Akoh, eh, bo, bo, boh. How, when are we going to apply this into risk assessment? We have too much reliance on UPA, US EPA and DOE standards. So, n'chayeh, n'chayeh, eh. Ado, n'getah. Uh, azeh, ich, eh, neh, ah, noh, ch'negi, jik, isre. There is too much, uh, compliance and reliance on risks based on population design perception of risk assessment. And it is based on one in 100,000 population. If you ever think, why, ch'adon, yeh, sohon, yeh, neh, o'sh'ja. It was based on that. What are the chances of one Navajo in a population of 100,000 developing cancer? We didn't meet that threshold. There's only about 30,000 people in Shiprock. That's people that are living in here. Akoh, we don't meet that threshold. So environmental assessment, EI, esh'ah, get it in. They are based, their assumption is based on marginal impact, low impact, minimal impact, over and over again. So let's revisit that and let's apply our, our knowledge to be enticed to the environment. Cleanup strategies.
Charlie, you're excuse me, Charlie.
All right. I apologize, I, but I, I wish I could, like I said, go into so many other things. But that's one of the things about, uh, these types of, uh, of, uh, hearings, we don't have enough time. I have all the time in the world. Thank you very much.
Mr. Charlie, you have excellent points. So if you would like to have some written, it would more likely to take that from you, Charlie.
I will, sir. Allow me enough time and I will point these out specifically to your attention. Thank you, Rick.
Oh, Speaker.
Yes.
Since we, since we have, um, if I could, if I could ask my colleagues here, we could grant maybe five more minutes. Um, Mr. Charlie is the ex, is one of the premier experts in the field. And we have yet to hear his voice. And so especially for Northern Agency being the Uranium Commissioner, they've had public hearings. And so I think he's encapsulating everything that we want to hear in a way that will help us with the foundation of our position statement. If, um, if we could, if we could have that speaker five, five more minutes, please. My colleagues.
I agree. I agree, eh?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Dr. Charlie, five more minutes.
Eh, five more minutes. I trained you well. She was my intern, she's not a good mom. Cleanup strategies. We went for two years in a community to community that is affected by abandoned uranium mines, AUM for short. They have varying recommendations from these affected communities. For an example, when dealing with waste, they want site-specific disposal sites. Ah, kon, ha'tah, ge, ah, ch'adon, eh. Some of them says develop regional disposal cells. Ah, l'ha'keh, like from Coe, one area, the Club to in one area, eh. Uh, there's one chapter that mentioned backstowin, pneumatic backstowin. N'de, ah, andato, eh, n'chay, k'neh, n'chay, ch'eh, be, k'neh, chay, so, be, yah, eh, eh, zeh, yeh, k'neh, eh, na, ah, ch'eh, doh, ah, noh. Uh, there's another, a couple of communities that don't want these residual contamination in their area. Haul it out the Navajo Reservation to repositories outside the Navajo. Nah, da, eh, neh. But there's this disconnect with our traditional practitioners. It came from Navajo, we need to leave it on Navajo, nah, da, eh, neh, eh. And then there's, uh, some people that mention co-disposal with the DOE sites. Kon, ta'sh'ja, eh, don, boh, ka, ha, da'sh'ja. And I'm pretty sure that it's not receptive to the communities who are affected, eh. So. So, my point is much analysis, much assessment of causes, transportation, health and safety, that needs to be done as soon as possible before cleanup criteria. We are also at a loss, much of my background, doubt, looking at legislative and policies. The twenty-four C F R looks at radioactive mine waste merely as overburden. Now, the ten C F R, the same material that is taken to the repositories, it looks at that as an eleven E three byproduct, subject to stringent administration, management, transportation, storage, long-term disposal. So, it regulates that. N R C is involved. See, we're at a disadvantage. We have, he says, we're a sovereign nation. Why not look at that little more critically, so that we can address all of the mine waste, not simply from its place of origin, but more critically, looking at the radio chemistry and what it does to the human population? I don't, there was concern on the position statement about only a few mines will be cleaned up. Okay, these are based on settlements like Tronix, Kermit G, and other mining companies that are under, under, they're under the trust, trustee one and two activities that is ongoing. But remember, in the nineteen forties to nineteen seventies, who was the sole procurer of this ore? Who authorized this? Who used it? The federal government. They should clean up these mine wastes. They should provide compensation. Compensation is a strong, strong property of restoration, because otherwise you live in continuing psychosocial impact among the Navajo Nation. Anger, mistrust even to our elected leaders, I dare say, to agencies from the federal and the state. That's where the psychosocial impact lingers. And the last point is, the N A Uranium Advisory Remediation Committee is only an advisory committee. Strengthen it. Make it, give it more key. So. Yeah, thank you very much.
Before we go, let me go ahead and, you guys want to get ready, we have honorable Chairman So and honorable Bill here introducing himself. Eight hundred and eighty miles long. I don't quite get, just for the information, this is my third term to the, almost a twenty year break, you know, council. I'm back in. So. The district I represent, Castle Merrill Lee, home state. Meet me.
God, eh, good morning, everyone. Good morning. This is my first term. I'm coming from the judicial branch for twenty-eight years of physical dementia, and my first hire in Riches Town, so, is from Peaceless Coast, in Faraway, definitely fly. And I have four posts, three posts after that. One is in, taking the, I'm working on, visual, it's a huge mission. Eh, I'm just, this is my first time, I'm not a car, this is, with my twenty-three, eight arms, weapons, as a trip lead Navajo Nation, as applied to this uranium is a serious that we need to take care of. Eh? When are we going to, eh? This is, eh, EPA, I don't wash it down, this is. Eh, yeah, eh, 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 eh,
Tide, to tohro, ahne, ite, aru ti, chesu zini. Shunna, shine de, veyma yu na znis. Ei, ei na, ahne, ite, aru, snamge, e, shet, zine, e, tu, miro homke, da nele, vey, nu kla, aru, e, aru, e, vey ni may, aru, aru, eschen do, aru, a, chimay al, e, tu, kenze, ta desna, ko. Ie, de, e, ya, na, no, khe, cha, de, neli, e, da, do, do, vey ne, steta, do, sketa, nis. Ei, shen, na, shi, ko, pa, hile, ka, ina, aru, e, de, do, zisa, tabo, ohede, ta, zini. Ei, tu, ku, e, aru, ko, na, do, zyes. Washington, imjes, ke, tu, ei, tan, ze, ne, aru, e, ta, e, ni, chesu, na, znis. Na, ho, na, basa, ri, kaya, ha, ke, shen, na, e, ro, i, ni, zan. Ya, yo, tha, o, kote, ni, ke, e, aru, oru, tohro, yen, chen, na, znis, ta. Shini, zen, na, walt, ha, na, ni, da, tabo, ohede, yen, ha, na, khe, aru, ku, e, tan, to, san, na, nis. Ei, ku, na, tabo, ka, aru, e, de, do, be, zil, ta, sun, ta. Chire, e, ti, sixty, ei, e, ku, na, aru, kote, ri, ke, sun, na, e, ku, na, tabo, ka, e, de. Aru, esko, aru, esho, e, kote, ne, ha, na, aru, e, aru, ei, na, ni, te. Ya, de, yok, e, ero, ka, ri, chyan, ne, ni, ta, te, nis, ta. Ke, da, na, khe, da, ni, te, ni. Tohro, zena, a, ni, na. La, hi, zon, na, hi, smek, na, chi. Ie, ka, de, ko, pe, sa, de, ni, ye, e, vey, ma, hile, ni, mi, bo, na, am. Ni, ma, i, aru, e, ku, na, e, de, pa, na, kote, na, i, hi, smek, ina, ya, ha. Ah, ya, ha, pe, sa, do, is, ni, e, vey, nis, kesi, de, nis, na, aru, e, ba, ha, va, ti, o. La, ga, na, e, sa, ko, pe, is, ni, e, de, zen, na, ni. Ke, oru, ra, it, ai, da, na, si, da, ni, te, na, ye, na, ke, e, e, tan, ze, ha, re, ti, a, zine, ni. Ei, aru, e, va, ta, eschen, da, de, kit, da, no, ke, ta, is, e, pa, na, na, o. Ei, e, o, ni, tswa, ta, aru, zan, da, is, e, de, ke, e, ya, na, na, zon. Ah, e, ku, na, ka, as, ti, ita, zia, e, tswa, aru, e, ba, na, ste, o, khe, i, e, tu, shoi, bit, aru, zon. Zon, as, ki, ta, e, get, a, en, en, na, zen, na, sun, ta, aru, ke, e, va, ta, van, tseski, ka, da, ke, de, na, e, pa. Khe, da, pe, sa, is, ni, e, tu, bu, e, di, hi, smek, ina, ye, e, e, va, ta, de, ha, ni, ho, na, de, ni, e, e. Ki, ta, ha, di, ni, de, bit, shet, ta. Asa, e, ma, he, ku, sa, e, na, da, is, de, zo, e, de, va, za, e, aru, ko. Ei, e, aru, is, la, vey, pe, sa, e, ka, cha, de, e, Washington, no, ye, di, e, tu, o, be, o, be, sa, ka, na, ni, de, ti, e, e. Ei, tu, ni, tu, ko, ma, da, ni, aru, i, ina, e, i, tu, zis, na, aru, eschen, na, zon, ke, aru, esho, pe, sa, de. Oru, ni, it, e, ti, aru, fi, na, sa, e, ka, ni, zhi, zut, ka, aru, eshen, ku, chi, e, e, ti, she, va, wa, zon. Ko, e, ti, kom, u, ta, stiu, bu, che, ta, e, bit, ni, ha, ni, e, va, ta, e, ku, na, nek, tan, ze, ke, e, sa, e. Jo, ya, e, tu, na, se, ne, ni, ta, le, si, ki, ei, e, e, de, na, ni, tsu, zin, na, ta, o, na, de, real, aru, du, et, ma, sa, aru, du, vey, na, zine, de. So, Mr. So, aru, du, zut, chi, Mr. Speaker, na, de, ha, e, li, de, o, ya, e, tu, on, ha, i, e, gi, aru, e, de, ta, si, na, sa, o, e, van, zon, e. Ah, van, sun, ni, ah, e, i, i, a, gi, e, va, ta, e, a, pe, sa, to, is, jan, shka, do, zyes, aru, ke, aru, do, a, de. Ya, e, aru, na, zo, ne, ho, na, zon, ni, de, ke, an, na, anima, zon, ni, de, ya, e, o, fi, o, va, de. Akos, ke, ya, e, as, so, shke, ke, e, ko, e, ya, i, shu, ni, tu. Aru, ku, do, sun, na, na. Tu, ta, fi, va, tro, e, tu, eshin, e, ni, et, ko, sa, de, ni, ge, i, e, ke, e, de, ni, da, e, ma, e, sun, na, na. Do, shet, chi, aru, shi, a, vey, eshi, eshi, du, na, na, shet, chi, Mr. Speaker. My brother, Daniel, aru, shima, Andrew, ke, e, sa, u, e, ha, na, ha, na, ka, e, gi. Ku, do, ta, eshin, e, ni, shlo, de, shu, do, tu, he, ti, ni, da, shet, de, ki, ya, na, ni, da, shet, chi, ka, chi, e, da, sun, na, na. Do, shal, shal, ni, e, ka, ba, ha, na, zon. Ie, e, de, ta, le, zon, a, e, ti, i, van, tseski, si, gi, ta, a, vey, nis, to, e, ta, eshen, si, e, o, o, tseski, si, de. Aru, e, ya, e, ba, ha, di, eshi, zo. Zo, i, de, na, ni, ke, ni, gi, ka, ka, i, shet, ze, ni, ke, ni, gi, ei, e, ya, ti, ni, ma, na, as, zan, che, e, di, e, ya. Ko, e, de, tsis, ka, de, e, de, zehi, de, de, ni, che, e, de, lo, ni, de. Zo, ei, e, ya, ba, ah, na, ni, zin, a, a, e, ei, e, ya, ba, ka, na, e, e, ya, ka, re, chi. Ko, ei, e, ut, a, e, ba, ah, na, ni, zin, ni, gi, ka, as, na, ni, gi, zo, e, tu, shal, na. Ko, di, le, zon, ni, ni, gi, zo, ei, e, ni, ma, na, as, zan, de, tsis, e, de. Ko, ha, e, de, aru, le, e, e, tan, shi, le, a, zin. Ko, di, le, zon, ni, gi, zo, ei, ut, e, de, e, la. Ye, ye, ca, zil, gi, zon, na, tu, e, ca, ni, ye, zo, e, de, e, la. Ko, da, ni, si, ba, ta, aru, e, ye, o, ha, e, ta, de, e, de, shid, o, ko, zo, e, ka, ta, ha, o, chi, ha. Jo, ni, il, na, ye, o, sa, o, bizi, o, bizi, o, ka, o, ka, e, ka, ta, ha, o, chi, ha. Ho, de, ni, ya, shet, esha, o, na, ma, no, vey, ho, de, ye, o. Aru, ni, ku, e, le, zon, da, ni, shi. Ie, de, ku, e, ha, e, aru, a, la, tses, cha, a, be, shi, de. Ei, aru, a, e, da, an, ni, shu, shi, ze, e, ho, na, je, o, na, je, cha, zil, shu. Cha, e, ka, ta, ha, o, chi, ha. Zem, ku, si, sa, i, shi, de, ya. Ei, e, ya, e, na, va, di, tla, a, ke, has, ti, ni, na, ha, e, da, shi. Ko, ei, ut, e, va, ni, e, e, va, ni, e, 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 di, di, de. Ko, a, ni, e, ya, e, ka, jo, ba, ku, na, e, e, jo, ba, e, e, ni, zin. Ko, di, de, shi, zon, ni, ni, gi, zo, ut, a, e, ka, ta, ha, o, chi, ha. Ko, da, ha, e, xi, e, di, de, na, ni, ke, ni, gi, ut, a, e, ka, ta, ha, o, chi, ha, o, ni, tsis, ye, chi, o. Ei, ha, e, ta, shi, e, e, hana, e, ba, ha, lo, shi, ya. Aru, ku, e, be, shi, e, tu, ni, shi, gi, cha, as, de, zan, na, ta, e, ku, e, e, kaya, aru, to, hna, ni, e, e, hana, lo, shi, ya. Hana, tu, sun, tu, zon, zin. Ko, di, da, ta, ha, e, nis, shi, le. Ja, e, yo, o, tske, xi, xi, ni, de. Ha, e, ta, shi, e, ya, e, ba, ti, ho, ti, tu, ko, la, ts, e, e, ya, pe, de, 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 ni, la, ts, e, a, 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 de, no, ke, shi, la, ts, e, nis, zo, e, van, tseski, shi, ya. Ko, di, aru, ju, ko, e, ya, e, ni, e, e, shi, zon, zon, zin. Na, ho, na, do, ni, shi, no, na, ya, ha, na, ts, e, vela, e, o, va, o, va, e, ki, e, do, ku, e, e, va, ta, o, na, e, e, ku, e, la, e, it, a, e, ni, ka, ho, ho, tu, ni, shi, la, ts. Jo, a, e, va, si, ti, shi, shi. La, ha, e, ta, shi, zon, e, aru, ni, shi, gi, it, a, shi, ta, has, ti. Eh, zon, vey, ni, ti, shi, na. O, du, na, ho, na, do, ni, shi, ka, e, shi, do, ke, shi, na, ni, gi, vela. Ja, e, ka, e, eski, o, ta, ha, na, de, e, e, va, ta, a, da, mi, it, a, ka, e, shi, na, na, zhi, ha, o, chi, ha. Ko, a, ku, e, ti, ku, a, e, paha, o, zito, ku, e, 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 ya, e, vey, va, ta, o, da, mi, e, e, de, no, ke, shi, la, ts. De, ni, a, mo, shet, ja, ha, e, ta, aru, na, na, ya, kina, o, zito, ta, vela. Ei, e, e, ku, e, ut, a, van, tseski, si, e, e, a, di, shi. Kon, ha, as, tu, e, ni, sa, ni, e, a, e, ya, e, ba, han, na, ha, na, de, da, na, ni, shi, la, ts, na, ya, o, zin. Ei, e, shi, e, hana, tu, ho, de, e, zon, zin, de, do, ni, e, di, la, ts, e, chan, de, ya. Ii, shi, e, ya, e, ben, na, de, de, chi, len, zo, e, van, tseski, shi, le.
I appreciate your consideration of time, Mr. Speaker. Ke, e, ok. Very briefly, what I stated in our language, I want to reiterate. In that, we, as the Nat people, as indigenous peoples, we have this intrinsic relationship with the earth. We call her our earth mother. We, we understand her makeup, her physical, her physicality. The fact that she has a spirit, or the fact that she is alive. And to, to, to know that the substance of uranium is a part of the earth's body. And we know that, that different elements are created to, to, as a caution. Even in our own human bodies, we have certain acids, certain substances that are toxic. And in this way, this uranium substance is, is, is a part of the earth's body to, to give it that caution, to not, to not mess with it. But we uncovered. And it's the impact that has been tremendous, has been very great. I'm just saying that I just grew up in Little Wazoo, a few hundred yards. And then across the street was the uranium processing plant that my dad went to every morning. He had a lot of sickness from working around the uranium. We lost him too, a few years ago. So the impact on our communities, our people, has been tremendous. So what I'm saying, Mr. Speaker, and my esteemed leaders, is that to recognize that, that reality. That the uranium substance is a part of the earth's body and that there are stories, perhaps, there are songs, perhaps, ceremonies. It can be evoked to perhaps neutralize, to minimize the toxicity of the substance. I don't know. But it just seems that, that, that possibility needs to be looked at, it needs to be considered. And I say that in terms of the discussion of removing this disposal cell, to uncover it and to move it someplace else. To me, it doesn't make any difference. It's the same substance that we would be transporting someplace else. Where we're taking it is still the earth. So, the, the option that I see is for us to deal with it here, in that context, in our traditional frame of mind. To use those, those values and those principles that we were born here on this earth with. So I'd like to stress that point and then, Mr. Speaker, to, to make a couple other comments. One thing that we were, that we are very disappointed in, is that the, to, to address the uranium talents here was not considered in the tronic settlement. We were left out of that. So there, there are tronic funds for, to deal with mines and other elements. But the disposal cells were not included in the tronic settlement. It's one of the great injustices, continuing injustices that our community is suffering. Then a couple of points on the position statement. The first point being that, on the evaporation pond, that, that collects the contaminated waters for the purpose of evaporation. We are in discussions with the Department of Energy. And they did present us three, three options on how to deal with it. But we rejected those three options. Myself and our delegate Eugenia submitted that very formally, a position that we reject those three options. We feel that there are other options that still need to be discussed. The main reason why we rejected those three options is that DOJ, DOE was, was suggesting that all of the collection of groundwater up here on this, on the plateau would be terminated. We know that the contamination of the groundwater has been extensive. So why do we want to terminate that collection of those contaminated waters? That's the main objection that we had. Last point, sir, is that, the, in reference to the disposal cell, the, the position statement also says, suggests that the, that the disposal cell be uncovered and moved someplace else. I don't, I don't believe that that is the final conclusion from the community. I, 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 I really would like to have us continue that dialogue to consider all options, including the one that I made, that I talked about here, about dealing with the uranium in the, in terms of our own, the net ways. And so, we're not, we're not decided conclusively, formally, officially, that we want this disposal cell moved. We want to have the full discussion about all of the options before we do anything with it. So, Mr. Speaker and our leaders, we want to have you consider those two elements in the formulation and finalization of the, of the position statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, the issue, yeah. Appreciate Christina Morris, Christina, talk to you, or is it Christina? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, I'm speaking today on kind of two hats. One, very personally, personal, I am, I grew up in Chicago, my family's from Texas. We have their ancestors, living with parents who, who's living with family, historical cancers to diseases. A lineage that speaks across generations that, whose root causes have resulted in exposures to such extraction industries that have continued to perpetuate a generational, a generational impact. That contributes to the allostatic load. And what I mean by allostatic load is, I mean that we, it's not just our physical makeup, it's our spiritual makeup, it's our cognition, it's our exposure to our environmental. It, those impacts collectively hurt ourselves, our people, and our kids. The narratives that I have been exposed to since 2015 of the H R Health and Public Assessment Report that came out, we can, in conjunction with many partners across the state, the national collaborators, national partners, have elevated, elevated community voice to make this kind of dialogue, the recognition, to understand the complexities. And it's really not complex because the root causes really comes back to the uranium, the exposures. It hasn't even been fifty years since those first exposures. I really appreciate what has been said by many of the elders and community members. And meanwhile, as we are aging and our, our elders are continually going, we are still on defense about what is justice. And that is some of the things I'm hearing today, is justice, social impacts, health impacts. Yet, we are now, five years later, continuing this dialogue. And I agree, the, the continued study is, seems to me fodder for the waste of resources and waste of changing laws. The research is there. We haven't even tapped into enough into the Navajo Nation Health and Research, Human Research Review Board, to really understand the cross-section data. We know the Navajo cohort study has significant data that shows the, the DNA transcripts that are in our bodies, that are in our people's bodies. Not just for uranium, but the consequences of what uranium has done to everybody. And not, because not everybody is the same, not everybody is going to be getting, not everybody is going to be at risk for cancers, there's going to be other, other areas like Parkinson's disease on the rise, to other neurological problems, asthma, respiratory illness. I feel like the EPA and has not, has really done no justice for our communities, especially people, our communities of indigenous populations across the nation. This issue is not just a Navajo issue, it's a global issue. It's a global issue that has to be, continue to be on the forefront of our people and our leaders. But many of these policies have, have been decided for the rest of the thirties. And not many of these reports are, are continually perpetuated that we need to mine, that we need to drill, that we need to do, continue on with resources. That hasn't changed. So I would just say that, from the folks who have lost our family members, you're going to continue, and we're going to continue with family members as we continue to just kind of, continue to feel like we have to fight by words. By, by continuing to be, to meet the demands of local, state, federal, and national indices in order to, to, to understand that the injustice really comes back to communities whose voice hasn't quite been heard. The causes, the data are, shows that not just, there's a cause, there's not, there is an association, a strong association. These diseases didn't manifest out of itself, they came from somewhere. And as a result of those hundred and fifty years, and less than that, we've been exposed, have been, the continual historical or racial patterns of extraction and exploitation continue to resonate today. And unless we are prepared to enforce some of these changes, we're going to continue to stay where we've been five years ago, ten years ago. And I would just say thank you to my, our leaders here for really having this forum here, really appreciate the opportunity. I do also, on my other hat that I wear, I work in health, I work in health promotion for Under the Department of Health. Too little do we realize, do we discuss health in all the sectors of health determinants. Root causes of why health is not just a matter of your zip code, it's about where you, where you live and location to many of these areas. Data maps have been shown to, to, to have demonstrated the, the locations of the mining sites. And we're not asking better questions, like, if we're going to put community gardens, are we ensuring that communities understand if these gardens are in, in location to uranium mining sites? Are we empowering or informing our communities enough about how the data can be used so they can make better decisions? So it's things like this that we look at as, as health advocates and not just health constituents.
Yeah, today, Mr. Speaker, members of the Twenty Fourth Council, aru, shi, pe, shi, de, ya, e, aru, esho, ta, na, zon, na, aru, ku, do, i, tan, de, i, pa, ki, e, do, like, pa, ke, ni, zan. You mentioned seventy years, the legacy of mining and milling, that's, that's how long it took, many, many years to, to see what has happened to our people. I'm Phil Harrison, Kiti Chee, Ni, and Tachi, Masashi Chi, aru, de, tan, ni, da, shet, chi, do, ta, pa, it, da, shi, na, na. I'm originally from Cove, Cove, Arizona, James, he always says, that's where the west begins, where the buffalo's roam, the rivers flow. So I grew up as a former uranium miner underground. I, I helped my dad drill Gateway, Colorado. I also have worked as a remediation worker, with the help of Sir Charlie. I was a surveyor for rare metals, surveying the whole site that was contaminated, and doing soil testing in the lac. Ko, ta, chima, mshi, shi, ta, that's where I'm coming from. I'm also the lead consultant for the Revelation Exposure Compensation Amendment of 2019, as you know, that's in the House and that's in the Senate. And that's how, that's where I'm coming from. I also worked for a home care company, Anna Kurtland, that we had formed back in 2012. And I want to mention that it was a privilege and honor to, to work with Mr. George Otter, being a one-term delegate of the Twenty First Council. We made a lot of leaps and bounds working on behalf of our people. A lot had to do with A lot had to do with discussing the issues and looking for remedies and restitution for our victims. 2007, we testified, seven of us, testified before Congressman Waxman's hearing. All these programs, federal entities, were called in, nuclear regulatory, BIA, environmental. And they were told that, "You're going to go back and you're going to do assessment. You're going to look for contaminated structures, contaminated water. Communities out there are impacted." BIA, where were you? You're the trustee. So they did a directive, five years cleanup assessment. That five years came and went. So the stakeholders of this hearing, we met, we gathered. And they gave us a report. And five more years were set aside. So that five years then, believed it came to an end around about 2018. And during that time, we also asked for, if they can somehow include a comprehensive health study among the moms, the dependents, the children of uranium workers. Mr. Speaker, members of council, to this day, we have that here. I would like to challenge you to revisit that, the five-year plan, and then the five-year plan, B W. The other thing I'd like to bring out is the mine sites. I grew up in Cove, Mesa I, Mesa II and a half, Mesa V, I heard sheep on Mesa VII, the White HP Ranch. I heard sheep out there. My grandma and my grandparents both died from cancer. My father, age forty-four, died from lung cancer. That's the reason why I got involved. My mom had to go to work. With a little education, she was a cashier. That's where we're coming from. Typical among the families that sells from superstore. That's the daily things that we had that were encountered, so is many of you. So, I want to know what kind of toxic chemicals were at these mine sites. I want to know what's ailing our mom, our siblings. Was there mercury? Was there cadmium? Was there selenium, cesium, strontium? What kind of chemicals were existing? We have not heard them at the same time. Department of Labor in Washington, federal entities, they have these database. They have that. So our people has not been told, "You have mercury in your system. This is causing you thyroid issues, the disorders, colon cancer, intestine, multiple melanoma, lymphoma." They're all existing among our people. Seventy years, that's a long time. We're barely sitting here trying to seek some kind of remedy. Couple days ago, I helped a miner, eighty-four years old miner, was preparing for surgery. And I helped him undress. He had tears in his eyes. That's what I do during the day when I'm called upon to interpret. That's what we're seeing every day. This is what we're involved in, working for home care. Last night, I got a text from a lady, originally from Tuba City. Says, "Phil, I wish I could tell you good news. But I've just been told by a doctor, I have six months to a year to go. I'm worried about my kids. I'm worried about my grandkids. I'm worried about my home. I'm worried about my family." That's the echoes they're ringing out every day. And you know that almost every community, they have the Alice's. All these companies making a lot of money on uranium victims. We need to wake up. We need to somehow get involved. And it's just ironic that, going back and forth to Winderock for ten years, asking for funding. Thank you, Speaker and the council. Finally, we have allocation, two hundred and fifty thousand to work with lobbyists. And to this day, I haven't been told the contract is signed or not. That's the problem that we have, lack of communication, not understanding where we're coming from. We're going to be addressing the 2000 amendment. Those that were not included during the 2000 amendment, specifically, post-71 workers, seventy-two and nine, we're going to include that. Money to study the members, the uranium farmers, the biology study. There's many more others. And I'm hoping that we'll be looking forward to the House Traditioner hearing. It has not happened yet. The sentencing, we did. And then I'm very happy to say that we did bring Congress to Winderock when they had the House hearing, House National Resources Committee, October 2nd, Winderock. Same thing, a lot of victims testified. Same thing with Albuquerque, the sentencing. Superely, inviting us up there. And I was, I had the privilege to speak over there. Same thing. The other thing that's very, very important, talking about justice, talking about justice. We were the first responders. You all remember 9/11, right? They referred to them as the first responders. We were the first responders to the national security. We're a democracy. Our veterans, our co-talkers. Some of these veterans came back and they got nothing about lung disease. And those first responders, twenty-one thousand, got compensated at five billion. I looked at the compensation rate. One miner having five brushes of the lung. This miner from 9/11, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Cancer people, a million dollars, two million dollars. And look what we got for our cancer, fifty thousand. Look what we got for our miners, a hundred thousand. If they were able to work twenty more years, they would have made over five hundred thousand. And yet, they only got a hundred thousand. That's a slap in the face. You know, for our people to be there in some day of the Cold War, we did a lot as North American people. We have to be honored. We have to be, we have to be up there to tell Washington that, the Western society, that there's still justice that needs to be done. One day, I'm out at the ranch in Winderock. I was sitting outside during the summer. I saw a stick bug coming here. I had a broom because these listeners were coming around, listening to me. I had a broom and there was a stick bug coming. So I used that broom to push that stick bug about ten feet out there. So going to Winderock, and then we stick bug. Sometimes, you know, it's frustration. The rationale behind this, I don't know. But I understand position statement, with legislation. We want to get going as soon as we can because I understand it's just time to bring this way. Let's get going with this. Thank you very much. Uranium has impacted our people's health. Also impact our water. San Juan River. Did it, or do we have to dispose it? Air. Did it, did it have to be? So you're being blamed for it. It's been done for many years. Now, if I was in the basement, I would have been. Did it, did it? 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 Let's do something about it. Do it. Let's not just stop. Let's take action. Let's do something. Get rid of all that stuff over here so we can have people living out there. Get rid of that pond. Get rid of that monitor underwater. Why waste money on it? Let's waste money on it. Did it? Did it? Did it? Thank you very much.
I really agree with Mr. Harrison over there. The first compensation started from Red Valley Chapter. So I love to help my people. I really agree with Mr. Harrison over there. The first compensation started from Red Valley Chapter. Uranium workers. That's where it all started, this compensation. They were fundraising to get those elders, to get those uranium mining workers. My dad is priceless. The money that he got, A, B, C, he got that. That's where my dad worked at Cove. That's where he met my mom. That's how they met. Of course, they got married. That's where we grew up, at Cove Mountain. It's in my backyard, in my backyard. Did it? Did it? Did it? He got some of that tech. Did it? The very first home my dad built. That's the foundation that he used, not thinking that it's contaminated. My dad, of course, would have five siblings. To this day, that house is still there.
Day to come here to address. I even put it on Facebook with people that we work with. I don't know if it's spring. I don't know if it's spring. I'm sure that we will be in the same place. Get some crew that you know. But now, of course, he knows all those people that were there. I'll be there. No, 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 no. Twenty, twenty men. It's a big deal. And now, just value for you. I think that is. Shijie was the lead person. He was the former. The lack of late, late, not long ago. But I'm sure that they, of course, they wanted to support their family. And my dad went down there. And he worked down there and all the family members, they went down there. And my dad was the last one to leave from there. And guess what? We went back down there three years ago. The mine is still open. It stinks. It smells. I literally cried. My dad, I can see. I went down where I used to play. And I still saw my little toys. My doll. People that cook. My aunt, if there was a small village. And at one time, my dad said, I told them that I used to go on reservation. I didn't get to see my parents until Christmas break. Because I was at boarding school. My siblings were at boarding school. And that day, my dad said, I told you that I stayed there. We're going to take you down to that mine. Let's go down to the hole. And there's another guy that will operate that. We went down halfway. Turn around. We turned around. So I've been in that mine. I taste some of that ore. And the person that would dump the ore would get after us. When we play basketball, we run back over there when he's back busy. So I would recommend, also say, get someone. My auntie Sarah Fanali. She's the one that started all of it. She's the one that really started this uranium office right here too. Her and her husband, they worked as a team. Her husband worked in the lab. She was also helping Senator Pinto. She found her husband recently and buried him over at San Fei Veterans. I even asked her, I said, And she said, I've done my job. But I don't want to travel, is what she said. Because she's at that age. Set somebody up right there to really, really be the key person. Now, all these, these tests, all these things, the closure of the mine in the coal red valley behind my backyard. I don't know if it's completed. Who did it? How much did it cost? Who's been hauling away my house that when that's contaminated, including other homes in the area? I'm sure. Hire some base now from each community. So they can communicate. And address that back to our chapter. Our chapter community, they need it. Yes, of course, compensation is good. But like I said, my dad is priceless. Our children are priceless. My sibling, one of my siblings, he's a special need child. There are others that I know that in that village that are special need child. I never, ever really expressed my feeling until today. It was hard to, to even express. All these years, I shouldn't know uranium. I couldn't do it. Finally, today, I said, I'm going to speak my life. Because I lost my dad nine years ago. He ran. He did it for me. He did it for my mom and my children. So my dad is priceless. I showed it. And then about, see? Don't just talk about it, but take action on this. Take action on it. Somehow form that. I believe now, she got a lot of money. They get to use. Speaker, President Nas, Lizer. Now, our former president, he gave us the top. He's from that area. I've seen him. After all of that, or stairs, Philip Harrison. I don't know if it's true. They're carrying that on. I appreciate it, Mr. Harrison. And those of you that are involved. Thank you, everyone. My time is over. If it's not, I will follow you to the next site. And finish what I have to say. Okay? Thank you very much. Yeah.
They are the pushing so they said over seven hundred mines were were blocked. They been there. Over there. They call them. Oh, that we know that. They are we know that. They know that. I don't know. I know that. We know that. We know that. They know that. They know that. Oh, I know that. They 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 pushing not know that. They are they get that. You're the who you know that. I don't know that. You know that. They 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 know that. I don't know that. I don't know that. Oh, I don't know. You know that. They 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 pushing who you the could have that. They know that. They know that. Elementary school. They know that. 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 They deposition, no, they don't know. So they know that. 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 So they know that. They know that. They
Yeah, I know. So I wish I know that. So yeah, I understand. I understand. She remain she 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 I can she she we she she nineteen eighty-four, you know? I was like I thought she they they she let uranium I lungs it was it's not cancer, but it's some, some other lung disease. It is it's lungs overload, obviously. Only function was like five percent. They could have very tough. It but I doctors, they change I transplanted, transplanted, I don't know. It back in early fifties, only nineteen sixties. Uranium, not really Colorado and I believe Bull Canyon, that was long part of here. Paradise Canyon, that was I I thought I should show them. Show they show that. They get that. They know that. I don't expose, no, uranium. I know that. She knows she I know that. Nothing she about. They it from whatever it was. I hear that. Let's be she she I I don't I know that. I know that. They know that. Yes. I know that. I know that. I don't mind that. I know that. She been been that. I know that. I don't know that. They know that. They know that. She I know that. They know that. They know that. I don't know that. They know that. She know that. I know that. They know that. I know that. I know that. I know that. They know that. They know that. That I know that. They know that. They know that. They know that. They know that. I know that. That I don't that. Diabetes and blood pressure. They know that. They know that. Heart problem. I breathing then from, from here to parking lot, I had to stop four or five times to get to the vehicle. They know that. I go to everything's good. I breathing, everything's normal. But I wish they could have a facility to work. What they should have a facility to work. Run tests on us as to, it's really from we've got to really have cancer in order to qualify for this compensation. My dad never saw his compensation. He was like about six years away. She he had plans for his children. A lot of them, children are to so with that resolved, compensation to the family shouldn't be a problem. Instead of finding money and getting money for these uranium cleanings and they can get money just like that for, for that. Why can't they just? They know everything all about it. But why are they stolen? Why? Why can't they? For us living survivors should get compensated. So we can see that, so we can enjoy what life we got left. Because to this day, we're we're really struggling with health, health issue. Heart problem.